Hey, bro.
Hi, Annette. How are you?
I thought for sure I was gonna be late today.
You did?
Yes.
Well, you're the first one here.
I know. I was panicking. Yeah, I was panicking.
Yeah, I've had a, I just, let's see if I can get this on my, my sound system. I got my power.
Where are you? In your garage?
Basement. Banished. Banished.
You're banned.
Yeah, I was making too much fuss upstairs.
Yeah, that's what we do.
The house is occupied. Okay.
All right. Welcome, everyone. I will open up this meeting of the planning board for the town of Maynard. The date is Tuesday, March 8th, 2022, and the time is 7:02 PM. Since this is a virtual meeting, I'll do a roll call of the members of the board. Could you, if you could just let me know that you can hear and participate by calling your name. Bob Brown?
I'm here. I can hear fine. Thank you.
Thanks. Natalie Robert?
Hello.
Hi, Natalie. Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Thanks, Jim. Annette Garabedian? Item two, the public hearing for Maynard Crossing. I'll open up the hearing, the public hearing for Maynard Crossing. And this is the request. To modify the site plan and special permit for building R three at two dash fifteen digital way. Is there, who is, who is among us for the applicant tonight?
Hey, you've got.
Oh, sorry.
Apologies. John Cusick with Bowler Engineering and Bob DiPietro is here with me as well.
All right, and what is Bob's role in this bill, John?
Owner.
Owner.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Is anyone else joining you tonight, or it's just two of you?
No, just us.
Great. Bill Numbs, is there anything you want to? Preempt this, or should we just turn it over to John?
Uh, well, uh, wait, uh, we also have Wayne Amico, town engineer on, uh, tonight. Um, I had, uh, just, there were comments, uh, made by the board at the last meeting. Um, uh, and I believe they were all, um. Addressed on the applicant's recent middle. Um, and centered around a reduction of parking in the rear. Uh, ensuring downspout is not on the handicap ramp, dumpster locations, answer questions about lighting. Um, so, uh, with that, I think I have, um. Uploaded everything onto board docs, and I also routed it to you via email. So I think everybody should have. Of the latest, and I'll turn it over to John.
That, thanks, Bill. Um, I'll be very brief, but I can certainly dive into, uh, things in much more detail if, um, if you desire.
But, um, John, since it's, since it is the public hearing, it would be helpful to cover. What was, what was changed since last time, just for the record. I think we're all up to a speed and agree on it. We've seen the back and forth from you and Wayne, but just for the public record itself, just to go.
Absolutely. If, if I could share my screen, I can run through it as, uh, as well.
You should be able to sh- share it out.
Great. Okay. Did that show up? Great.
Yes.
So we, we went through the full presentation, um, last hearing, and we received comments from the, the board. Uh, and prior to that, we've received some comments from V H B, which had previously addressed. Uh, but the recent middle addresses some comments from the board, and I'll run through those kind of one, one by one. Asked that we add one-way signs here in here. So if any maintenance vehicles coming out of the. Uh, maintenance areas, they know to head in the proper direction. Asked for a bike rack, which was added in this area over here. Uh, there was a comment on extending the, the heavy-duty pavement into the maintenance areas. You can see that dashed line. That's what represents the heavy-duty pavement. Um, somewhat of a housekeeping, uh, item. Just wanted to show the, um, the A T M on, on these plans. It's not part of this application. It was previously approved, but we, we just. Added that to the plan set, just so it's on all kind of reconciled. Um, I think the biggest comment probably was in this area here. If you recall, there were some parking stalls here. Here in here, and the concern was to. It didn't want people loitering back in that, that area, I think. Um, so it was requested that, that those be removed. Um, so we have, we have done that. There's, uh, landscaped area here and here, just a small turnoff for any. Um, uh, maintenance vehicles or something, um, could use that area. So all those parking spalls, stalls have been removed. Uh, the request came also whether we needed any accessible parking under this field over here. Um, but we thought it was best to add a couple of, um, accessible parking stalls located here so they could access, uh, these doors. Located here. Um, there was a request, this little line over here is, is kind of an overhang over the, the door, um, here and here. Uh, there was a request about, you know, was there going to be any issues with, uh, water, uh, running off over the, um, uh, the, the ramps in these areas? So Danny had mentioned that there was a stone drip edge there. So we've added that, um, hatching in there and a label to, to make sure that was very clear. That's what would be in that area. And then finally, there was a question just relative to. You know, how the, um, trash would be handled in these areas. So we essentially just hatched out an area right adjacent to. Uh, the maintenance area here and here, where any, um, type of a dumpster would be, would be located again within that maintenance area and. Hidden by the, the building, not out in the open. Um, so that is, that is really, really what we've changed at the request of the board from the, the last hearing. So we've resmitted, uh, revised plans to you as well as a letter that just outlined kind of line by line what those changes were. Uh, so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or go into additional detail.
Thanks, John. Uh, Wayne, let me go just again for the record. Can, can you just confirm that that all makes sense to you and that you reviewed this and, you know, please? Let us know if you have any further questions or comments where they've been addressed.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, yeah. So as John noted, um, Bowler and the applicant had addressed my comments, I think, at the previous, prior to the previous meeting. Um, the comments that they, that John just went over now at, came at the request of the board. I, I'm kind of indifferent on the parking behind the building, so I'll leave that to the board to decide whether, how John's shown that is appropriate. It seems more than reasonable what they've shown, uh, by removing the parking. Uh, and the other, uh, small ancillary items that John just described seem very reasonable as well. So I'm perfectly satisfied with being presented for the board's, board's perspective.
Thanks, Wayne. Uh, board members, any, any comments or feedback on what has been presented? All right, I'll take that as a no. Uh, one, one comment for me, the, um. Uh, the handicap stall parking spots that were in, that were shown on the left side, the added ones, yes, thank you. Um, I'm not completely familiar with A D A. I just, I noticed that the other handicap parking. Spots around this area have been some type of hashed, what, crosswalk that goes to the building? Is that required? By A D A law? Is that, is it okay as shown?
No, it's, it's not required. I, I think these are a larger area, um, that the field over here, and we've got a, a walk that kind of comes the whole length this way. Um, so we felt it appropriate to put it there. Uh, this is a much smaller field. Um, so we, we didn't. Didn't think it was really needed that way. We could certainly add some striping, but, uh, it is not a requirement of, of code. Um, okay, nor would I think it would be necessary here, but we could certainly add it if it was.
I, I'm not asking that to add that. I just want a clarification, because if you look directly below your mouse, those handicap parking spots. Uh, yes, God, are attached, essentially attached to a hashed walking area. Just wanted to make sure that. We weren't missing anything from the compliance. That's all.
Yep.
So it sounds like the board has no more questions or comments. I have no more questions or comments, and Wayne is fully satisfied as well. Bill, Bill Numbs, do you have anything else to add? At this time? Bill, you're on mute.
I don't, um, the only thing I would, uh, do, uh, when, if the board, uh. Decides it's time to deliberate, I'd review over the, um. The protocol for how we have to approve, uh, a site plan amendment or a special permit amendment, which involves, uh, some findings, but I can do that when we're. We're ready.
Understood. Um, I, I'm on board docs. I'm just looking for the staff report for this.
There is not a staff report for that.
Okay.
Um, the, on that one, um, because the, we tend to use same basic background of it. Uh, everything was contained on the routing memo, but I can, uh, open that if you'd like to share it.
Or, uh, I'm looking for, uh, just the. The decisions that are, that are requested of the board.
Oh, that, yeah. Okay.
Just want to make sure I understand what the decisions are, that way we can proceed with. And see if we can make those decisions.
Well, let's see what I'll open up. I'll try to share it here.
And while, while we wait, I'll ask John and Bob if there's anything else I would like to add, uh, before, um, because I'm working towards making a motion. To close the hearing and, uh, taking votes. Um, based on, um, based on what's needed to be done.
No, I think, I think we're good on our end and, uh, presented everything that, uh, that we have.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, what, uh, Mr. Chair can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so what we're, we're doing on this case, we're making, we're going to request a modification to the approved site plan and special permit. For building R three, um, as well as the surrounding parking and infrastructure to make changes. Uh, to the, uh, original approved site development plans dated September eighteenth, twenty seventeen. Um, and, um, the square footage, the big difference is that the, um. R three is separated into several buildings, R three A, R three B, uh, building size decreased. Uh, from fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two square feet to forty-six thousand five hundred and thirty square feet. So that's a, a, a deep. Decrease of, uh, nine thousand three hundred and ninety-two square feet. But before we do that, which is our typical, um. If to find that we've looked at the, um, criteria for special permit. Um, we have to do a finding that the proposed changes are generally consistent. With the concept plan that was approved by town meeting, and the reason we have to do that is, I think, um. I think, uh, everybody's been on the board. We've done one of these, but just in case they haven't been. Um, the concept plan was approved by town meeting in October, uh, of twenty sixteen, and, um. Changes have to be generally consistent with the concept plan. So what we're going to vote on are three things. Um, we would, uh, finding that it was consistent with the concept plan. Um, secondly, that we would approve, um, a modification of the special permit. As well as the, um, site plan for the changes as proposed by the applicant. Um. And the rest of it, I would, I will, uh, tell you after, because we'll need some, um. Specific, um. Changes made to the plans that are resubmitted. Um, or, um, after, uh, the board makes this decision to make sure that everything is, um, consistent. We're going to need, for example, an updated concept plan and, uh, site plan, an overall site plan.
So. I'm going to take public comment now. Is there any? Any members of the public that would like to provide comment on this hearing? I don't see anyone on the phone, Bill. Um, I see everyone is available on Zoom on. Internet connection.
Let me double, I don't see. Um.
And comments can be made either in the chat or by voice.
No, I don't have anybody on phone, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, not hearing, no public comments. I will make a motion to close this hearing. Do I have a second?
Check it.
Uh, all in favor by voice, Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. That's five zero bill to close the hearing. Hearing closed. So. The first step. Will be for a, to, to, so we can, this is time for us to discuss internally. Let's take these one at a time. My first motion will be to. Uh, make a finding that the proposed changes are generally consistent with the concept plan from two thousand sixteen. Did I get that correct, Bill? From two thousand sixteen?
Yes.
Um.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Any, any thoughts on this, members of the board? I'm generally, I, I, I believe that this is consistent. With the proposed change, the proposed changes are consistent with the concept plan. I have. Uh, no issue with, uh, voting for this one. Um. I will take a roll call for this as well. Uh, the motion has been made and seconded. So Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes. So that's five zero bill. For, for the, for. For, for a vote that the proposed changes are generally consistent with the concept plan. Got it. Second, I'll make a motion. That the modi- modifications as proposed by the applicant. To the site plan and the special permit, including the surrounding area to building R three. Um. Relative to the original plan, which is dated in September. Bill, what year? September two thousand seventeen, so?
The original plan, um, was on October fifth, twenty sixteen for the concept plan.
Yeah.
And, and the, um, site plan has been amended a number of times.
Okay, so, so through many amendments on the site plan.
Right, right.
My motion is to find that the modifications to the site plan and special permit in the surrounding areas, as proposed by the applicant. Uh, are reasonable. What, are we finding out they're reasonable and consistent? Or that's?
Yeah, we found that it's generally consistent with the, um, the concept plan, but what you're doing now is just approving. An amendment and a special permit, um, and that has the typical criteria.
Um, okay, so we're just approving the modifications.
That's correct.
Okay, so my motion then is, I'll say it again, my motion is to approve the modifications to the site plan and special permit. To the surrounding area as proposed by the applicants for the area building R three. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Any discussion? All right, roll call vote, Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's five zero to approve the modifications to the site plan and special permit.
Okay. And now, um, Mr. Chair, it will be, uh, just that the site plan, uh, modifications have been reviewed by the board. And it's, uh, remains consistent with the criteria. Um, I would like to add a condition here. Um, and, um, for the board to consider that I will, um. Require at this point, um, the concept plan to be updated and provided, uh, to the, um, town as part of this approval. With, uh, the updated square footage, et cetera. Hey, hey, Bill, um, I'm, uh, public comment is closed, but just for your reference. In the correspondence I provided to you and the board, we did recommend that condition about the traffic monitoring. That should probably be added to. I know the applicant's already proceeding with that, but it should be added as a condition just for the record. Got it. So, uh, board, I would appreciate, uh, those two, um, conditions being added as part of the site plan approval, please.
All right, so let's cover this one more time. Um. What is, what are we? What are we approving right now, Bill?
Uh, Wayne is asking for.
No, not the conditions. I got those.
Um, I'm sorry.
I was a little confused at the beginning because you said we needed to. Determine that the modifications are aligned with the concept plan, but I thought we already did that.
We did.
Okay, so.
We did. I wanted, I just, I'm saying that for. The, the final approval, I need some materials resubmitted that are updated.
Okay, so we just were now.
Yeah. I'm making, I can add it. Yeah, I was just making it for the record. Yes.
Okay, so the motion, do I have to make a motion for this? Okay, so we just have to agree that. We would like to see the concept plan updated. And the traffic study conducted as, as presented by Wayne Amico?
Yes, and as, as required by the original, um. Uh, decision.
Okay, so there's, there's no vote that's needed? We just have to agree?
No, it's just so that when they, that, you know, a lot of the stuff is boilerplate, when it pops up in the, when they circulate the decision, and it's, um. You know, your conditions of approval and some stuff pops up. And most of it's, you know, very fairly typical. These are two things that I just wanted to make sure that they're going to, they're going to pop up in there. So I, I think, um. You know, the, the, the traffic study was just, I don't know if it's been discussed since twenty sixteen. Um, and then the need to update concept plan because we are changing. Now we've, we've changed the square footage. So that it's, it, I don't think it's. So that it's, it, I don't think it's a very big ask. It's just one to be, um. Just, it's important and it's not the norm.
So do we have to take a vote on this?
Just on the site plan approval.
I thought we just did that, Bill.
No, that, that's it. And then the, with the three votes. We do, I don't have that. We had to find, we have to find that the site plan is consistent with the zoning bylaws for the amendment.
Oh, for the zoning bylaws. Sorry, I, I'm having a hard night. I understand.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's confusing.
Bylaws.
Yeah. So what we're doing, just to be clear, concept plan amendment, which we're finding that the whole. Um. Proposals generally consistent. We're doing a site, a special permit amendment. There's a number of special permits out there, but. What we're doing here is allowing for the changes that are proposed, um, by the applicant, which involves square footage, changing of. Um, you know, that, you have, this was very, um, precise, the original special permit.
Yeah, I think I, I got it now, Bill.
Right, okay. So, and now you're just finding the modification is, um, consistent with the town zoning bylaws.
All right, I'll make a motion to determine and find that the modifications as presented to the site plan are consistent with the zoning bylaws. And we would like to add two conditions. The first condition is that a concept plan is updated and provided to the town. And the second condition is that. The traffic study will continue to be conducted in accordance with what Wayne Amico has presented and discussed with the applicant.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Any discussion on this board? Okay, roll call vote, uh, Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Bill Cole, Bill, I'm sorry, Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yes.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's five zero. And now we would have to make a motion to close the hearing, Bill?
Yep, or, um. That's your close hearing. We'll go on to the next item. Uh, the, I think the applicant is, um. They're very familiar with what the follow-up will be, and I'll be in touch with them tomorrow and take care of it and begin, um. Making preparations.
I'll make a motion to close this hearing.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. All in favor by voice? Yes, yes.
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 Thank you all.
Thank you, applicant. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Welcome.
And thank you all for being patient with, with that. I was having a hard time understanding all the pieces.
No, it's, 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 it's a little bit, you know, just because when we did it, it's just so many parts.
It's been a lo- it's been a long day. We'll just, yeah, I will, let me, let me go back to the agenda. I'll open up the public hearing, um, for the Green Meadow Water Treatment Plant, number four upgrades. This is the town. A major department of public works is requesting a site plan approval and a special permit. For municipal facilities use on town-owned property within the water supply protection district at one thirty-nine Great Road.
Right.
Uh, and I, I see Justin DiMarco is with us.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, for the record, if I may. Um, Bob, uh, prefers to recuse himself as he is a, in a butter to this. So, and that will be voting on this one as well. And we also have, uh, we have, uh, DPW Director Justin DiMarco, uh. Who named the water plant, I think, it was, and Gary McCarthy, um, and I will turn it over to Justin.
I mean, Justin DiMarco, Public Works Director for the Town of Maynard. I am actually the applicant for the special permit request as the owner of this facility under the authority given to be by the Town of Maynard. Um, tonight I'd like to introduce Gary McCarthy, Principal Engineer, representing Stan Tech. They are the OPM, the Owner's Project Manager on, uh, behalf of this project. Um, take it away, Gary.
Evening, folks. Uh, thanks, Justin. If I could, uh, share my screen, I've got a couple of, uh, a couple of things I'd like to share here.
Yeah, you should be able to, Gary.
Okay. Um. Trying to figure out which one it can be.
Uh huh.
Um. How does it, uh? There we go. Got it. Found it. Okay. Let me know if you can see that one.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, folks, for the, uh, for the time. Uh, again, this is for the application for a site plan review. Uh, for work that we're doing out at the existing, uh, well, number four water treatment plant. I'll give you, actually, if I could just scroll through here just a little bit. Let me. Can you see that, uh, site plan?
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. So, what we're doing for this project, uh, is, uh, the existing, uh. Well, number four water treatment plant, if you're familiar with the location, it's, uh, it's out behind the Fowler School. And, uh, this is the, uh, the roadway, uh, here that, uh, accesses the site. Uh, if you, like I said, if you've been out there, the, uh, the water treatment band building is on your left-hand side coming in. And then just beyond the building are, um, a couple of existing, uh, lagoons, uh, where we, uh, where the operators process some, uh, some backwash wastewater. So what we're doing for this project is a couple of things. We're, uh, we're building a new well site, uh, out in the, uh, out in the woods there. So we're bringing that new well site, uh, into the, uh, treatment plant, and that'll expand the capacity of the plant. Secondly, we are, uh, doing quite a bit of, uh, upgrade work to the treatment plant. It's a twenty-something-year-old building, uh, so we're increasing its capacity, we're, uh, increasing, uh, adding some filters to the, uh, to the building. We're improving some chemical feed, uh, systems, so lots of upgrades to the building itself. One of the other, uh. Things that we're doing that, uh, that impacts, uh, what we're talking about tonight is, uh, if you can see down here, I'll zoom in just a little bit. If you can see down here, we're adding a, uh, an underground vault. Uh, and what that's gonna do is, uh, we've got the, uh, water pipe coming from the new well source. Got a water pipe coming from the existing well source. We're gonna combine those two flows into a, uh, a new below-grade. Uh, piping vault, so we can measure the flow there. Uh, we've got a third source of water coming in from a new backwash waste, uh, holding tank. Uh, so in the future, the operator is going to be able to recycle the backwash water, which is a very, it's a big improvement to the water treatment system. And then that, uh, that water is just, uh, is, uh, piped into a single pipe, and that pipe goes up to the treatment plant for treatment. And. What I'd like to do is share a little bit of details on the, on the vault itself, which is why we're here tonight. And let me know if you can see this, uh, layout.
Yeah.
Looks good. Okay, so this is a plan view of, uh, of the vault. Uh, this is the upper portion, which shows a, uh, on the outer dimensions, a ten-by-ten building. All that building is doing is, uh, basically, it's, it's, uh, it's storing an electrical panel. Uh, some sample, uh, ability for the operator to sample the water, uh, at that upper level. And then an access hatch to go down into the, um, into the piping network below. This is the layout, uh, the planned layout down below. Again, we've got piping from the existing well. Piping here from the new well. We measure the flow from each. Combine the water in from the new recycle system, and then all that water gets, uh, gets pumped, uh, up to the, uh, to the treatment plant for treatment. Uh. In a section view, the, uh, here's the underground vault. And here's the ten-by-ten structure. It's a precast, uh, concrete structure. Uh, stands about, uh, eight, eight feet tall on the inside. Uh, same, same view just from the side. And, um, and lastly, we've got just a little isometric of that, so you can kind of see, see how it all works. Um, again, the piping down below. Uh, the top of the vault is basically at grade level. And operators will access the vault, uh, through a regular, uh, pedestrian door. Into the building with an access hatch down to, uh, to the piping system. So what we're, uh, oh, we're asking for is, uh, a approval of, uh, of this site plan review. Uh, for this ten-by-ten building that sits on top of the vault. So that's what I've got. I'd be very happy to answer any questions.
Uh, if, if I could just clarify one thing, um, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Bill.
Um, what we're doing, Gary, is correct. Um, it's in, it's, it's a strange process. Uh, out, something that's a little different than we normally do, but there, this, there's actually a special permit you're being asked to require to, to, um. To approve that's required because, um, there is a, a pump station, uh, being. Um, having an, um, work done on it, and that's specifically called out in, uh, section nine point three point three as requiring a special permit. So that's the first thing that we're, we're looking at. Special permit, uh, for municipal facility in the, um, work being done on it in the, uh. Water, uh, well-field protection area. The second, um, approval that we're looking for is a site plan approval. And that's required, uh, anytime there's a special permit issued. For any building in the water supply protection district. So that's kind of why we're here. Uh, just actually, the, the little building, the ten-by-ten is why we're here.
Yep. So I understand, Bill, that ten-by-ten building is our scope. The vaults low in the piping network and valves is not part of planning board scope.
That's just a ten-by-ten.
Thank you. I don't want to talk about valves or piping, or flow rates, or.
No. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Move that nature. So thank you. Um, so, so Gary, is there any on, on, on that front, on the ten-by-ten structures? Can you, can you just go back to the site plan overview? And just show again where that'll be located and discuss the sort of logistics around it. That'd be helpful.
Sure, the, uh, again, this is, is the, uh, outline of the vault itself. And, uh, the, the structure, uh, the ten-by-ten structure will be, uh, mounted on top of that vault in, uh. On the southern side of the, uh, of the structure, right in here. Uh. Again, if, if anyone's been out there, here's the, uh, the, uh, the access road that leads, uh, back to, uh, existing well number four. Um. Uh, so we're, we're planning on, uh, constructing this vault, uh, just off the, uh, just off the roadway. Uh, in a, in a clear area, right, right there.
Is there, is there any pavement or crushed stone, uh, being added to the perimeter of the building?
There is not.
And so it's just gonna meet with, uh, the current conditions or maybe the roadway itself will match to it?
That is correct.
Any elevation changes that you're making here? Are you making elevation changes, adding, adding soil material at all?
Uh, we are not. No.
So no elevation changes, no superficial changes besides obviously the footprint of the building and the vault itself. That's it.
That's correct.
Uh, any, any comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, I'd just like clarification about, um, I think this is all happening on area that's already been cleared, so there's no impact to trees or anything.
That is correct. Yes.
Anything else, Bill?
Um, do I have to approve that, uh, holding tank? Is that a structure too?
It is. It sits below grade.
Any other comments from the board? The hearing, um, I have no more comments either. Is, is there, I'll take public comments, Bill. Can you, can you see if there's anyone that's participating on the phone? Uh, for those that can hear me, you can participate by voice, or you can participate by putting a question in the chat or using the raised hand feature.
I have nobody on phone. Um, and I have. We have one guest. Um.
And, uh, hearing, hearing nothing and seeing no hands and no chat. Um, I'll move on, but if there is a public comment, please speak up and feel free to interrupt me. Uh, Gary and Justin, is there anything else you'd like to add before we close the hearing?
I'll just give a general overview to understand some context for future public, uh, consumption. This is a major aspect of our four-phase water capacity improvement program. This is actually phase one, the onboarding of our, our new well source and the upgrades of the treatment plant to handle that new wa- uh, that new water source. This is, uh, the first step in a, uh, in a four-phase step to increase all of our water capacity, production capacity for the Town of Maynard, to allow for future growth. And redundancy in our system in, uh, in the foreseeable future. So this is a very vital, important capital improvement project for the Town of Maynard. There's one we've been sought after for, um, over four years now.
Is there anything you can think that would help, that we could help with at this point, Justin? To add or to consider, or is, is it just? How, is it helpful just to, to take votes and then, and then allow you gentlemen to proceed?
You got it. Yeah, a bunch of A's. Let's get this project rolling. Right, Mr. Coleman? Let's get this thing rolling.
You bet.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Gary, can you stop sharing screens, please?
Sure.
All right, I'll take, uh, roll call on this. Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's five zero to close the hearing. Um, and so the, there's two votes, Bill. I, I, I understand the first one, so I'm gonna do that and then we'll discuss.
Right.
Uh, the first one is, I'll make a motion to approve. Uh, the modifications to the site plan with the addition of the building, the ten, ten-by-ten-foot building as discussed in tonight's meeting and shown on. The, the design drawings. Do I have a second?
You have a second.
Thanks, Jim. And any discussion on this particular one? We are approving the site plan modification. We're approving the site plan itself or the building structure?
Yes, it would be, uh, ideally, uh, it would be reversed because the reason we're having a site plan. Is because we're permitting a use by special permit, and that's kind of why. But you can invert them and I can, if you can just stipulate their inverted. So the use.
We can put both motions on the table and then take votes in the correct order.
Understood.
So we can, we can do that, Bill, but for the record, we can go back. You told me that this was the first one, so I went by, by your, by your notes. So, so can you just walk me through the second one then? This is a. This is for us to approve the use. On, on total property?
And it, no, it's it because we're in the, uh, well-field protection area. Uh, a use is permitted by special permit of the planning board. Um. And the, one of the uses or one of the categories is a municipal use such as a water work. Pump, pumping stations and parks. So in this case, we have waterworks. So we're. We're issuing a special permit for this. I don't know if there was originally one, but. And then, uh, the second vote, or the, the, the site plan, um, approval is triggered because there is a special permit issued. In the, um, well for the protection area. Does that make sense?
Hmm. Yes, it does. So I would make a motion to approve the special permit for municipal use of the public waterworks for this particular property.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, any discussion? All right, I'll take, uh, votes by voice. Jim Coleman?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie Robert?
Yeah.
Annette Garabedian?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's five zero bill to approve the special permit for municipal use of the public waterworks.
Thank you.
We'll, we'll go back and Jim, let's just, um, we'll just reissue the, the motion. Um, that way it's clean for the record. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan. For the building structure, the ten-by-ten-foot building structure as shown on the design drawings. for the building structure, the ten by ten foot building structure as shown on the design drawings and discussed tonight.
And I'll second that again.
Bill, do you want to correct me for that one too, or are we good?
Oh, come on now. We don't own that type of ship. No, no, you're right. It's actually it's perfect.
Okay, good. Uh, I'll by if it interrupt me if you would like to discuss, but I will take voice uh voice votes here. Uh, Jim Coleman.
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw.
Yes.
Natalie Robert.
Yeah.
And that Garabedian.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. So that's five zero to approve the site plan. Anything else, Bill?
No, I thi- I do think we have a record for the smallest standalone structure we've ever proved as a board.
All right, gentlemen, thank you for your time. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Gary.
We appreciate it.
Sorry, Justin. Hold on. Justin.
I just wanted to say thank you to the whole board. I understand that this is kind of a minor situation, but it's much appreciated to expedite this process. I really do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Same here.
Thank you all.
You're welcome, guys.
Thanks, folks.
Bye. Okay.
Apologize for the dog in the background. Okay, so we've covered items two and three on agenda. Um, let's go to item four, discussion for Powder Mill Road corridor and review of the M A P C presentation steps. I'm gonna go on video meet for for a minute. You guys can continue with the conversation. So so go go ahead, Bill, please uh lead us into this discussion. Things to add. I'll I'll be I'll return in a bit.
Sure. Uh, well, everybody, I think uh this was part of the um special project agenda that we had set up uh for the next two meetings. Um, and this was uh in general, just to run over um your thoughts of the M A P C presentation we had on the um twenty second. And um I I uploaded the presentation if we um wanted to discuss anything specific. I also say, is that is that Dr. Wang from Beijing Royal School on here? Or I see possibly, which would be good. Um, big player in this. Um, so um I don't know exactly if uh you would like to. Oh, okay, sorry. It it is not. Um, so I would uh, would you like me to run the uh PowerPoint through real quick and we can go through what uh it was about twelve uh slides that we can discuss them? Would that be useful?
I'd rather you didn't.
You don't need to discuss them. We can skip them.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Would you like me to show it?
I think so.
Okay. Let's see here. We had a pretty good turnout for that one. I'll tell you what.
It was great.
That may have been. We crashed the uh through the Zoom. Um, and also, as you know, I've written a follow-up um for the uh follow-up grant to continue this. So, okay, and here we go. And let's see, share. Can everybody see that?
Hmm.
All right, and um let's see if I can make a little. Okay, um. I thought, oh, wait, I minimize your. So, um. Well, this, let's see this. Um. I I'll just scoot along and then if anybody has a specific uh things they want me to add, you know, or or to comment on um, or we can add to the work that's going to be starting with the zoning. Um, I have a thought on this, but I'd like to hear from the board first.
So Bill, I have a question. How how did they determine what the study area would be? Like who's in and who's out? Like, how do they draw the line?
Yeah, that's a great question, Bob. Um, and that's what kind of what I was going to ask you after about what we do, but uh the study area was selected. Um pretty much because we wanted to ensure that we had, uh, first of all, that we had um all the wa- riverfront area on Powder Mill Incorporated. Um, and on the uh other side, there was a number of projects that we wanted to make sure were at least considered uh for, you know, in analysis and potentially for an overlay zoning district. And that would be uh for the Maynard side. Um, it would be uh Deer Deer Hedge. Um, the um storage facility, Beijing Royal School. Um, and interestingly enough, the 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 a lot of the neighborhoods on the uh south side um are non-conforming with their own zoning that exists now. So we figure we'll just we'll put it all in. And we can always, you know, nothing's written in stone, but it allows us a chance to come up with overlay that may make things easier for a number of um different types of projects. Um, also, uh, I don't know, um. Can you see my pointer? Can you guys see my pointer? Um, we also wanted to make sure we got um the upcoming um Powder Mill uh place apartments that are coming in. My question to you guys on that, Bob, was going to be, can you please think about if this, if we're going to create an overlay district, there's, I can think of an argument to keep it to properties directly abutting Powder Mill Road and the river, like say there, and then kind of maybe carving it out uh in other places. And I can also think of reasons why it would be advantageous for the town to utilize um the entire study area and consider that for the overlay. And that was, I I think that's that's something we I would like everybody to kind of consider and and tell me, you know, provide input when you can on it.
So, Bill, I think part of that is it kind of depends on the objectives of the overlay.
Exactly. Yes, and and you're you're right.
But I also want to say this. I got two other thoughts. One is big hunk of this is Acton, and if we're talking our next, I'd like to know what their next steps are.
Um.
And then also the issue is I really like the housing on the south side of the road, and I don't really want it to change.
Well, yeah, yeah, agreed. And not only do I like the housing, I like the neighborhood. Um, yeah, so that that that's a, those are good points. Um, well, the first is if if we were going to consider adding an optional overlay to existing neighborhoods, the key word would be optional, you know, in that, or you know, they're grandfathered in where they just stay the way they are. Um. Part of the reason we thought it would be, you know, I think you and I have even discussed this in the past. What are the advantages would be that as new development came in along the corridor, we could retrofit portions of Powder Mill Road with um improvements that may benefit those communities. So um, I'm thinking, you know, like pedestrian amenities, bike amenities and so on. Um. I think the other thing that we've discussed in the past, and I think all of you remember this now with the MBTA communities, is that one of the objectives may be that we put an overlay district to fulfill the obligation for our MBTA community zoning. Um, and I have a little follow-up on that and planners uh update, which I'll explain where we're at with the MBTA uh communities. But anyway, excuse me. Those are good questions, Bill, and that's a that's that's absolutely right. But remember, I mean, if we did apply it, whether it's optional or mandatory, if nothing's redeveloped, it really doesn't matter.
All right, I'm I'm still not hearing any objectives of an overlay, but
MBTA.
What is Acton doing?
Yeah.
And what's their next steps? And what's Acton trying to accomplish on their piece?
They're trying to expand their complete streets network is is um, that's one of their top uh priorities up there. They um, the second thing is, I um I think that while we're leading this initiative, um, I think that they are um they see the advantage of a coordinated uh planning approach, particularly where we they can utilize the um riverfront area. Um, and in their case, you know, they have some amenities. Well, amenities may be strong, but they have a, you know, boat launches and stuff to build off of. But from what I've heard from them, and I've speak to them quite a bit, uh, other than the objectives that we have with, you know, creation of a a flexible district to um fulfill everything from uh MBTA community uh and so on. There's um, they see it as um a way to move their complete streets initiative forward.
All right, so for me then, like one of the action plans for us would be to match their complete streets effort.
Uh huh.
My initial focus would be complete streets the entire corridor.
Right.
So I repeat, it's building it just do the whole thing matching, probably matching whatever they're doing.
So do you think, Bill, you you've um heard about and we've discussed um I the grant that was just uh, we just requested to develop kind of a complete streets templates, um, recognizing that, you know, we want to be consistent as possible, but sometimes limitations um maybe present that we have to adopt it somewhat. So that makes sense then. I mean, that grant, do you make sense to forward that objective, doesn't it?
I don't know. I mean, they get more limitations than we do. I mean, we got a big old road. We could do plenty with that. We got all the right away we need. They got a bridge, that's.
Oh, that's that's a good point. Yeah, that's true. So I think I think that that's that's huge. I think you're absolutely right. And 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 then comes the question about the adjacent communities. This to me, if we could pull this off and and create a better corridor for the community, that would be a co- a a win really for those adjacent neighborhoods that you that you're saying you like how they are. So do I, but it would also give them another amenity that would and I would think improve the quality of life considerably. Good. I mean, right now, who the heck wants to ride their bike down? Who wants to go walking down her? You know, so anyway. Next slide.
Yeah.
Did I put the board? I put my board to sleep. Oh, that's the first. Sorry, guys.
It was a question.
Um, yeah, so this was just, you know, why? And you you know, we are familiar with most of this. Um, and it's just kind of went on to um you know, the kind of the benefits of this. Um. River access. Um, Bob, you've you and I have briefly discussed what our goal is of um any new work that we can have uh funded by MAP C for this, where um basically identifying the challenges of r- river access, right? I mean, could you kind of? You had a lot of thoughts on that that were good on that.
On where the opportunities are and you know what the extent is. So what are the amenities that you're looking for? Like, you know, is it just a few access points where some of the properties are going to give permission to the public to walk to the backyard, if you will, and and go to the river? Or is it something more? Is it, you know, putting in a dock so people can stand there and fish? Is it um is it a is is it a walkway? How extensive is the walkway? Um, is it, you know, a a landing on the Maynard side of the river to be able to put a canoe or kayak in? You know, so the the idea was try to figure out, you know, well, what's possible out there and what if people think we can get out of it?
And and what I really am hoping to learn from this is what is appropriate also, like for a specific portion of the river? It it seems to me if if we whatever improvements we make, whether it's an improvement where it's simply leaving the conservation land the way it is or removing may maybe removing evasives or whatever the case is, or going up to um you know, where something active like a canoe launch or or whatever the case is, it there's a public value to all of that. Um, but where um where the black box comes in is, you know, what permitting is required for this? What is there a way to get like a blanket approval for certain things uh along the river? You know, and these are the things that I'm hoping to learn. You know, from, because I just don't know.
Well, one element of it, I think, the wet access, you know, actually getting in the river with a boat or something like that. I think we just leave that to Acton because they have two active spots now and they have an opportunity for a third one at that new residential development.
Yes.
So as far as, you know, canoe launches and stuff. They should have that covered. I don't think we need that.
That's a good point. That's a good point. But what about somebody?
The river then, then it is next to the road, so.
Yeah, but what if somebody wants to make a a, you know, just a a little observation deck or a fishing deck or bird watching, you know, we it would be nice to have an understanding of if we need anything at all. I mean, I I'm not sure. And how to.
Oh, yeah, I'm saying, what I'm saying, as far as getting wet in the river.
Yeah.
It's covered by Acton stuff. If this is a co- true corridor plan.
That's a good point.
What you're talking about is a different you know, prox proximity to the river and using.
Yes.
But.
Right.
I think, right, I think everybody could take one thing off the table as far as, you know, we don't need a canoe launch behind the co-op because we got a couple already enacted. They're right there.
That's a good point.
Few few thoughts on this. Um, there's a dam, isn't there, on the on the eastern side of the larger belly of the river? So that will divide up the river itself. Um, Natalie's laughing at me. Natalie, I saw that, by the way. I don't know if she's laughing at me. We're belly and dam.
Who are you laughing at?
No, I'm sorry. My child has been in here for the last couple of minutes. It's very distracting.
Got it. Got it.
You can't pin it on the kids.
I absolutely am. When tiny people in the gym come rolling in in the middle of a meeting, it's funny. I'm sorry.
I'll I'll second that, Natalie. Um, so something to consider is that the river gets broken up there, of course, right? So, you know, there's a there's a West River and an East River essentially. Um, but that's something to just keep in mind. My larger thought is how to about how to approach this? Do we want to? Is this something that, and I have no experience doing this, so I'm I'm just, but I'm trying to get a sense of approach. Do we approach this and be prescriptive? Meaning, do we? Sort of look, look at this river and say, here's good opportunities to do X, Y, and Z. Here's a. Here's good for for a walkway. Here's good for a boat launch. Here is good for some a bench in a small park. Or do we? Be more, you know, or do we promote these things and have it come with flexibility and allow things to? Occur organically and naturally. And I'm sure that's, I'm sure there's a mixture of that too, and that may not be the only options. But basically, do we want to tell? People where things go, or do we want to allow things to happen more organically?
Well, that's kind of the I, that's kind of one of the goals of the uh, the phase two grant that we just wrote. Um, because.
Determine something that that to get a sense of. Of where, because I feel like those are two, like, those those are like the more extremes, like you could be very prescriptive about these things, or you could just like provide guidance and allow things to develop. Organically, but I my guess is there's probably something in the middle that we may want.
Yeah. You know, and what's appropriate um, rate for a regulatory standpoint.
Right. Right. Okay, so the river access really ties to getting a grant and getting some professional support on this to find out. Okay, so.
Yeah.
And I I feel like we could, we could spitball the river stuff all day.
Yes.
But it's it's still to me, as before, we we just need to get professional support to assist us on that front.
Right. Yeah, and I think that, I mean.
And I don't want to limit discussion on this. I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, I I.
Trying to be, I'm trying to be effective with our discussions on this. So if the river thing needs to wait. If the river access and the river engagement needs to wait until professional services, maybe that we just table that discussion.
Yes.
Is that fair? Sorry, Bob, I don't mean to burst a bubble on this.
It's like, you know, I. What I think is, it's like a community's decision comes about through a process. And that grant is going to fund the process, if you will. So we'll have community input, we'll have a realistic sense of what the options are. And then we can design what we want to do from there. But right now, it's just like, you know, it's just like, um, you know, the initial plan. That we're looking at, you know, had a a lot of things that sound nice. And you know how much of that is realistic or 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 pipe dreams and um. So, yeah, I think the the process provided the next round will help inform that.
So Chris, are we? Or is the plan to include the north side of the river in this consideration or just?
I wanted to ask that too. I don't. I don't have a good answer, Bill, but I didn't want to.
Include what?
The north side of the river, Bill.
We, um, well, there's nothing actually in stone, um, but that wasn't originally considered in the first. Phase of the grant, but I. I suppose it totally could be.
What's your thoughts, Phil Crancha?
I just strikes me that you can get more river edge access quicker. On the north side than you can on the south side. Since we own it.
Oh, that's true. Yeah.
And I and I think, um, you know, as we engage with MAPC to get professional support on this. I would suggest that that conversation is part of it. Do we utilize the north side? How do we utilize the north side? Is that part of our efforts now? Is it a part of a future effort? Is it a different effort?
Next slide.
Next slide.
More river, river access.
Not that we don't love the rivers, just. Feel like, feel like we should move on.
And we go back in the streets game here.
Can can you just brief us on what um, where Acton is in the process of complete streets? Do they have? Do they have templates? Do they have? Design drawings? Do they? Where where are they?
They got a, as I understand it, they received a a a grant. That goes along High Street. And it ends, I think, about at the shopping center on High Street. And so that's why, um. You know, it may, it made sense for them. I don't know, um. I don't have the full scope of it, like where, you know, where it began, but it was definitely a um. Something they wanted to build upon and um.
It would make it a lot less effort for the town of Maynard if 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 we would, if we considered their design features and plans to be. Amenable and we like them, it would be a lot less work for us to. Just take what they're doing instead of trying to create our own.
Oh, absolutely. And remember, their co- their co applicants with this, I uh. For the new grant and with that in mind, yeah.
Okay, so let's just, let's just um. Give them a lot of credit and praise for coming up with a great complete streets and then we'll just use that. That'll be our strategy. How about that?
I think it sets a good template.
Yeah, I mean, I like complete streets. Are going to have very similar features, no matter where you look at them in my experience. So it's not like. I'm sure we can make some tweaks. I'm sure we could have some differentiation, but like. If they can take a lead on complete streets, I'm really happy to allow them and to give them lots of credit for it.
Yeah, I um, I think when our, one of our next follow up meetings, I'll bring um. My colleague from Acton. You know, when we get to that, um. It it, they have, um, you know, this was something that we kind of. Put on their radar, I guess, originally, but they seem to be, I mean. You know, uh. Very enthusiastic about all the components that were. We're uh, working with, um. And then. Here, the next one of the the recommendations, this was interesting. I wanted, I mean, this is kind of stuff that. Is downtown overlay district stuff, isn't it?
Bill, before we get to that, can I just ask a question about the complete streets?
Yes.
When, so as far as like. Developing a plan and implementing it, it's like, so sixty two is a state road, right? So is that something like we work with state highway to do? Or is it something that we develop and then we we ask for their assistance in building it?
It's not a state road. Um, road, it's our road.
It it's a town road?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, okay.
I I don't think Maynard has, I Bill, Bill Crouch, I can um, correcting, I don't think Maynard has any state roads, do we, Bill?
No, they have control over some bridges, but no roads.
Yeah, I think that's correct. Um, but I wanted to ask about town of Maynard, sorry, the town of Acton. Is it also? You know, town of Acton is Route sixty two. A state road or a town road?
Oh, it would be a town road.
Yeah, okay. Okay, just curious case, it's just hap, it's helpful to know if if that's a state road, we did. I want to know that because that would be, it would impact us in some way.
Sure.
But I mean, they are recognized as. Primary corridors and stuff, so, you know, they would be a high priority for a complete street project.
Yeah, and particularly multi-jurisdictional.
Oh, yeah, they'd love that.
Yeah. You know. Let's see, I don't know, I I'll go to the recommendations and see. I mean, this, like I said, this was basically, I thought downtown overlay district type stuff, which we we we'd figured. Um. I would imagine that as we go forward, we want to. Really maximize our public outreach to ensure that. People, you know, that we build on what we've already established. As an understanding for uh, this initiative in the community. But we've done it all on Zoom, you know, on the Zoom meetings for the last couple of years and. And there's always, you know, somebody's not going to like something, whatever, but we have, um. But I think that uh. This to me. Is oh, is, you know, outreach to the nth, and we just do the best we can do to get. Why? It's worthwhile, why it's good for the town and why it's good for the communities. Because people are gonna, I mean, I could, I guarantee you, I I know what kind of stuff I hear on. Anything, there's a certain amount of it, and people are going to say, you know, why are we doing this here? And why do we need to do it? Why? What's the advantage of putting mixed use here? Or, you know, everything's okay the way it is and stuff. So to me, that's an educational component, which we've done before. With things like the um, housing production plan. And for that matter, for. Main crossing with our overlay, I think.
If Bill, it is, is this recommendation? For all future housing development to be mixed use?
No, I I think it's, I I I don't see it that way. I because I had, um. That I think it's just in that. Context, they're just talking about having, you know, a wide range of uses that are beneficial to the community and it makes sense.
So this would be adding mixed use as an option for for developments in the corridor.
Yeah.
And then it would be, would is the vision here? To make it so that any housing development or any site plans require approval? With with the planning board?
That would be my, um, I mean, that's what they're saying here, and that would be what I would recommend, a special, a special, you know, zoning district that. You know, there's going to be. A a a level of creativity encouraged to meet the objectives of the district rather than saying specifically. You know, um, this is prescribed exactly how we do it there. So if we decided that. For example, building off of, um, look what we have already to build off of. Okay, so we have something like, uh, Deer Run, which is about a hundred and twenty. Units there, um, we have, we're going to have the powder mill, uh. Place apartments, which is about. I think it was two hundred and thirty or two hundred and forty apartments. So right there, there's a critical mass of people right there. Um. Knowing that, it's not, it's not like it's a what if, it's okay, it's happening. What makes sense based on that? Then scoot a little further, uh, towards Maynard. And what else do we have that we know is there? Well, we know there's Beijing World, we don't know the scale of it exactly. We know what their plans are. Um, but. We don't know. How much, but we know the kind of. Um, project that will be created for that. And what would the demands or the the? Amenities be that that, you know, would go with that? The, what's going to happen with the um, co-op? The co-op, I would bet, I think that is going to be. I think it's going to be of a success in terms of major for sure, but I I would imagine. That we're going to draw from outside of Maynard for that. And that may bring a lot of new opportunities and the uses that go with that may make a lot of sense. And um.
So, this is what I'm struggling with about.
Yeah.
Like zoning and land use on this.
Yeah.
There's, if you can, can you go back to the map for once, light up? So. I feel like there's clearly areas where we would like to see. More commercial development. And and. Red areas where it may be advantageous or for other reasons to promote more residential development. Is there? So, I struggle with having one set of. Criteria for this entire blob. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Because I feel like. I feel like if we really got into the details, we may see areas where we would, you know. We may want to, like, for example, the the residential, um. Cul-de-sacs there in the center.
Yeah.
You know, that may be more about historical preservation. Instead of, you know, development of mixed use. And, you know, the areas along, um. Uh, where six. Where the John Deere facility is and.
Right.
And and properties adjacent to that.
Right.
That may be more appropriate for mixed use with some definitely commercial elements that has larger areas for parking and things of that nature. So I'm just. I'm trying to figure out. The, trying to make sure that I understand what the identity here is and that if one set of criteria would be appropriate for. All of these can different considerations. Does that make, does that make sense?
It does. I, I think the thing to remember though. Is, first of all, this, you know, this particular, um. Configuration is not necessarily, you know, what what would be, you know, we could cart, we could do whatever we want with it. Um. The second thing is. If. Neighborhoods want to stay the way they are. And I would imagine they do. That could stay the way they are. I mean, but the flip side to that. Right now, where we have this fragmented zoning, you just mentioned the John Deere site. And the John Deere site is really three separate parcels of land. On one of them, you could go and just build a single family home. Okay, so right in the middle of, we've got, on one side, we have, you know, um. Some de facto mixed use to the west, and on the other side, we may have, you know, Powder Mill Place and. Beijing World or whatever, and then in the middle of it, we have a single family house on a. You know, acre lot, that doesn't.
Yeah, no, Bill, we want to avoid that, of course. No, I get that part, but.
But that's what we have now.
I agree, and I'm totally on board with getting, making this better, getting a district in some sense. It's just when I look at the downtown district. You know, I, there's, there's a consistency of what is desired there. We want mixed use, we want residential above. Commercial retail below. You know, we want them to improve, we want a a general facade, a nice designed facade that matches the town, matches the area. Um, but I feel like there's different portions of this area that we're looking at now that would, we would think would have. Different guidance and criteria that we may want. You know, obviously, there's no point in, you know, with all the the deer, what is it? Deer, deer. What are the properties? Deer something?
Deer, deer hedge.
Your hedge, I mean, all those properties there. I mean, that's not going to be mixed use.
No.
Is it? So.
Wouldn't think so.
So. I mean, it seems like this, you know, this this district. Can you divide a district up and even further with? You know, could you shade like a portion that says this is a, you know, a historical preservation neighborhood area? This is a. Mixed use area, this is for commercial only development, can we do that?
Sure we could.
Right, and I, but I don't know how to make those decisions either, so I'm.
Well, you know, like, for example, one of the things that, one of my personal.
Hold on, Bill, hold on, Bill, I just want to ask the board, does that make sense, guys, girls? Sorry, Natalie. Um, does that make sense? Like, what I'm saying, what my concerns are?
Yep.
I think you might be touching on my original points is, as far as I'm concerned, the south side of the road is fine. The question is whether we want to do something to the north side of the road. So I don't even know why, you know, my study area would simply be the north side of the road, any overlay district.
Well, I, what about the, what about the uh, complete streets aspects on the south side of the road? It's it's not nice there. And it's no benefit to the neighborhood.
Separate project, I mean, that has nothing to do with zoning.
Nobody would have to do with the whole vision.
Now, project should just be done. It's not a zoning thing.
Well, that's, I I I don't disagree with that, but I would say that you'd want to incorporate it in a powder mill redevelopment plan. And that, you know, emphasize the value of that. Um, that could bring to the communities, but I I see your point.
But as far as complete streets goes, like we, because mentioned earlier, we just take Acton's. But as far as complete streets goes, like we, cause my channel, we just take Acton's. You know, Acton's plan for the street and we just run it down our corridor and say, okay, we're reserving this area here for turning it into like Acton's doing. And everything else, we work outside that.
Yeah, is it, I mean, I I, we have the flexibility to do that, the the other thing.
But Bill, on for for the properties in the south. Do you want to capture some of these properties in the south? So that the the town has more control?
And the only thing I would want to do on the south, um, personally, that. And I'm not saying I wanted, I mean, the thing that would occur to me to really explore would be what can we do to. Uh, make sure that the zoning at Beijing Royal is. Appropriate for the town and appropriate for what their vision is. But other than that, on the south side, no, I don't. I mean, what I'm thinking of, the reason, other than that, the reason I thought that the south side was important. Was to benefit those communities there with. Uh, a a a blueprint, you know, for improvements. And 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 where we could say, you know, okay, you know, this is what's envisioned along here and as development comes. Perhaps we could mitigate this, mitigate that, uh, that was all. The one thing I wanted to really achieve with this, other than um. Our normal objectives with mixed use development was I was hoping, and I still am hopeful. And maybe this is where you, where Chris's idea of a sub district in there become, I would like to make um. The senior component to the zoning that we don't have now. You know, for uh. A a a district that was tailored for, you know, seniors, and I'm not talking about like when it. Just something like the, you know, you see where they say, well, we're, this is gonna be fifty-five and over community and that's that, that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about. A zoning stick that reflects the. Data that we have in like our housing production plan and our new census information. And things like that that reflect the realities that we're gonna be facing with our senior population. How can we incorporate it here? And maybe make some areas where maybe, uh, you know, some higher densities with some services close by or. Perhaps um shared amenities like um. Park space or something like that. I thought that would be something that would be innovative and something that we could easily justify based on. Data we have for for Maynard. So that's another thing that I was thinking we. I mean. I think it's, I I think if you read that, you know, we know that that's coming too, that silver tsunami. So that kind of stuff.
I mean, I think if it's a quarter, it's a corridor. We're not talking about just Powder Mill Road and just the north side. I. I. I agree with the concerns about the south side, but at the same time. I think it's all part of the bigger picture, so I think. It's important to keep them. I don't know if it would look different, you know, if you subdivided it, how it would look different, but. I feel like within the overlay, there can be enough flexibility, you know, to encompass both aspects.
So we, we have, we we talked about the river. Access to river, utilization of the river, that would that would be tabled until we can get some professional support. It seems we have a big agreement that we all agree that the north side of the river. A model for the north side of the, sorry, not the river, a model for the north side of Powder Mill. Would be the a mixed use district similar to downtown in a sense that has. Maybe not exactly, but that has mixed use of residential, commercial, retail. It sounds like we generally like that idea. And that we have some questions about the south side of Powder Mill, how to approach that. And I I would just say that there's definitely different areas. We have condo development, we have old residential development. We have, and then some commercial and institutional development there too. So. Those on the south side of the road. There seems to be three different. Identities to it. Co- modern condo. Old residential and commercial institutional.
Well, I'm not sure it's identity, but you're good, it has two major low income housing complexes on that side.
Anything that we do like this, um. There's going to also be, you know. Education that we need to provide. So things, people, like, like we said, you know, what's? Any of the communities there, what would be the impact or what is going to change? And the answer, I mean. As, you know, we haven't done it, but I would think is is nothing if they don't want it. Just a question of how to improve what conditions are on the corridor to benefit them. Um, you know, but I, you know, I know how these things go, uh, and and somebody, you know, sooner or later will hear, well, they're. Trying to, you know, they're gonna get rid of all these neighborhoods or or, you know, something, and then it's just simply, you know. Not at all the objective, but we just have to be diligent with our. Education and our public outreach with it, and at one point. And say, that's not true, you know. You know. What I think. At this point, when when Navis said identity, that was, that was interesting, because what is the identity of Powder Mill, of the Powder Mill Quarter right now? I mean, what would, what is it?
I don't. It's um, it's an identity crisis.
It's an identity crisis. I mean, it really could, what is it?
Has has anybody um seen the Western Avenue Corridor Corridor in Brighton, Mass that they're working on? But you have the Charles River. You have the northeastern uh boathouse, so all the boathouses along the river. So they're, they're doing the same thing. The same exact idea that we would like to do for the Powder Mill um corridor. And I'm I'm by there every day and they have mixed uses of everything. They've got restaurants, they've got the the houses that have been there for, you know. Since day one and. Huge projects going on there right now, and it's gonna be called the Western Avenue Corridor. So it's, and it's, it's gonna be a walkable, um, it's it's um all green space. They they would, one thing though, they don't want any cars on it. They just want it to be pedestrian. But we know we can't do that with Powder Mill Corridor because it's just so long.
There's some lessons we can take from it. Sounds like a field trip.
Yeah, it's really nice. They're doing a good job.
We all pile on Jim's uh Jim's SUV there.
Yeah.
Anytime.
But there's one identity to the corridor. I wanna keep reiterating, I mean, I think this, it's a neighborhood for. Somewhere between five hundred and a thousand people. Living there now. So my priority would be to make it better for the five hundred to a thousand people who already live there. And that would, in my mind, take the John Deere site and just turn it into a park. I don't need, you know, an extra payment menu. I mean, I got commercial on that side, like. And I don't think I have too many constraints as to what it could be.
Well, isn't it, isn't there?
I need open space access for a big chunk of the town.
That would be nice.
Well, maybe it's. Yeah.
Well, isn't there a two hundred and fifty four unit being built close to that? So if the residents want to just move into it, which they'd probably want to walk over there along the river, it'd be a perfect place. If you go to the Charles River, they have a spot almost like that where they have the canoe landing. Where you can rent canoes just for the afternoon.
So Bill brings up a good point in my mind. It, you know. What is? What's, what, and I keep going, I'm trying to figure out what our guiding principles are on on this. It is, and we have a master plan, we have an open streets policy. We have some additional guidance here, we have a housing production plan. We have this opportunity along Powder Mill to take a look at. What is the priority? Is the, i- if we go back to master plan and other town documents, is it open space? And if we determine that. The priority for the town based on our documents and decisions from select board and other town meetings over the years is that. Open space is the priority, then I think we look to prioritize that. If it's housing production, if that's the priority, housing production, you know, s- senior benefits, things of that nature, then I think. We look at that, but I'm. And I want to base our decision, not just on what we want, on, you know, the town guidance, the town master plan and things of that nature.
The master plan, you know, basically goes along with what we've been. Conceptualizing so far, you know, there's a mix of uses, there's a recognition that it is um. That the river itself is an undervalued natural resource. There is um an acknowledgement that we have these viable. Great neighborhoods that exist there and nobody, um, you know, uh, that we have a. Probably, I I I don't wanna be overly dramatic, but we have a bit of a dangerous corridor. There for the neighborhoods that that where they can't. We could probably make it better to enjoy in terms of pedestrian, bicycle. Uh, use and things like that. We also have the presence of a number of assets that are there already, and that's where. Like I said, everything from the Beijing uh Royal to the. You know. I mean, any of the the Powder Mill. Apartments, they're there and how do we? Um, parlay that and what comes to make it for the best. Layout and 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 best um. To the benefit of the the community as opposed to right now, we have, which is again, totally fragmented and he. It could be a complete hodgepodge if we in twenty years, that reflects no progress at all. I mean, if we don't. Look at it holistically, I think. That's why I asked you what it is now, the corridor. I'm not talking about the neighborhoods, what about the corridor?
I think for most of the people, not for the people who live there, not for the residences. Because their experience is obviously completely different, that is their neighborhood, but for the rest, I mean, a lot of people, it's, it's just that it's a corridor corridor to somewhere else. Right? And I think as as it gets more densely developed, I mean, that's what we're talking about, right? We're trying to. Listen, I'm all for more open space, but if you want more open space, you gotta get. Our DPW to be willing to do, to maintain it and, I don't know. Kind of disheartening lately, but yes, I think, I mean, that would be ideal.
Well, and that's, that's our.
But my, but my point is, I don't want to. Say yes or no to open space in like a meeting form like this, I want to understand. We need to figure out what the priorities are. And if we determine a priority based on all town guidance that we have available to us, that. Open space is part of this, then I think we figure out how to incorporate that. If we think that mixed use development is the only priority, then that's what we focus on. I want to continue it, I want to tie these decisions back to our guiding principles and documents. My guess. Is that it'll be some type of mixture of a little bit of all this. I'm sure we need, you know, we need mixed use. We need condensed density housing. We do need more open space, that is a priority for the town. It's one of the. You know, major priorities in the master plan, but so is housing production. So how do we balance, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Yeah.
No, I was just gonna say, these are all priorities, and that's why you create an overlay district that gives the flexibility for private. Landowners who are redeveloping these spaces to have to focus on. One of these things that we're aiming for, right? Like, this is, this is all great for us to have dreams, but like, we don't own all the land, so. That's, I mean, that's the whole point of these guidelines, right? But we can't pick one. I mean, the, we've all read the master plan, these are all priorities.
And what I'm hearing is. There's a uh apparent danger in that redevelopment. That as you. Create a a more desirable location along. The north side and Powder Mill Road, the south side becomes more attractive to redevelop too. And then the people that live there get forced out.
Well. I mean, you know, the the, the idea of. Creating a special permit and particularly one with incentives, we've learned some of the advantages of that with the. Downtown overlay and we certainly can do that with anything we create and. But the core objectives, I think, are are, I think they're in. These documents already, I think the core objectives are, the question is the mix and the. Mechanism. But um. There's, everybody's got good points on this, it's it's true. I I think, I I also think that, you know, the incentive and. For example, like the density bonus type incentives is going to be a key to having maintained. Open space that the town doesn't have to worry about, but it's available to the public. It seems to me that that model's out there and, uh, you know, right now, we're. You know, somebody had come in and build very low density development by right. If we have the. Ability to make a higher density development that meets town objectives. And one of the objectives being. Provision of a open space or or affordable units or whatever the case may be. You know, we can make it worthwhile for the developer, and we can also make it where the town is achieving. Goals of the master plan or housing production plan or whatever, have you, open space plan for that matter. But um, it would be. It may be an opportunity to have stuff that, because we know that with it, with open space thing is maintaining it. And if we have it, we're, you know, private entity is gonna do it or can do it. And the the incentive for them to take on such a task is that they're having a. A bonus uh in something like a density that makes it worthwhile, well, it seems to me that's. That's a successful model in other places, why wouldn't it work for us?
I mean, if we're playing Monopoly, we would, you know, put a couple. Mixed use developments on this map. We'd put a park. You know, we would put some other amenities that tie to the river. And so I think, you know, I I agree, we, these things is what the town wants, you know, the town wants some open. Open space, the town wants and needs density. Um, the housing, mixed use. Complete streets. So I guess we'll just, uh, and I guess as chairman, I I think I have the right to instruct Bill to develop an overlay district that meets all those goals. And I think that's what we do and we'll just make him do it.
I mean, we should, to understand what you can do here, you really should look at it, the existing stuff and say, you know what, what could I build here? And is that a good or bad or indifferent thing? Because. I don't think there's a whole heck of a lot of holes and. If you play Monopoly and you look at the parcels, I just, I'm looking at the assessor's map and like, I never realized it, but the Elks. They control one quarter of the river edge.
A lot, yeah.
It's like, oh my god, right?
Right, the parking lot's never full and it's, it's, you know, it's, that property's three quarter parking lot.
And no, and half the park, half the lot is is uh not even developed. It just keeps going up the river, you just never think about it, it's all theirs.
I think about it all the time. I wish it was not a giant, yeah.
Well, we all love the Elks Club, it's, it's not against the Elks.
No, I love the Elks Club, but the parking lot, that you, you know, it's like, uh. It's the same reason that I don't love, you know, the plant, the part of this plan that says to. To make the corridor more pleasing, put the parking in the back of the building, that puts it on the river, I don't want it there. Like, you know, I want it on the sides of the building is what I want, and I want less parking, and that's the solution. Do not put parking next to the river, that's not.
Maybe maybe.
Monopoly, so we can figure out if you can build a Walmart on the Elks. Oh, you can today, that would be a problem. If if we currently allow that by zoning, but right now, none of us know that, because we don't even know what the zoning is there. That's why.
I I I get, I I like the monopoly idea to try to figure out what parcels. Are are underdeveloped or underutilized. But I also want to keep a long term vision of this too, you know, because we're setting up a zoning. For what, fifty hundred years? I don't know how long, I haven't been on this planet long enough to know how long. The overlay districts last, so.
I don't even think zoning has been around.
For that long, okay, no. But you know, like, I think there there's a long term vision, but I I like the idea of what you're saying, Bill is to. Does it? So when I say trying to figure out what the underutilized properties are, does that, does that make sense to you?
Well, yes, but it.
I meant Bill Crenshaw.
No, I I agree, because I I agree with Phil Namsler is, you know, there's a lot of. Single family allowable river edge stuff that. You know, it would be a shame that if it just stayed like that forever. And if it ever needed to be redeveloped, there's probably a use for it. So, yeah, so, yeah, there's a lot of underutilized parcels that. It would be nice if we could make sure that they didn't stay that way forever.
And Natalie, we interrupted you earlier, I don't know if the, I don't know if it's uh.
On alley, that's the way of doing it, that that's silly, parking on the river.
No parking on the river.
Yeah. I mean, the point, the point was taken in a way like, you know, we don't want a parking lot out out front and then a building behind it, I get that.
Right.
But yeah, but like, you know, parking on the river here.
It did, it requires innovative design, because the the parking in front is your Walmart formula. You know, that's, that's.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we can't poison rivers. Nice buffer between the road and the parking and then the building, then.
Right.
A buffer to the river.
Then some of these properties, there's not a lot of room to do all that either, you know.
Then they need to, you know, yeah, they need to rearrange things or. Ask for a waiver and have no parking and have every, force everyone to ride e-bicycles everywhere, it'll be fine.
Now, we need help on this, I really think we need more professional help, because like, I I'm thinking about elevation changes too, like where the parking lot of the Elks lodges. Just, you know, from the road, it's up what, like, maybe the roadway is like what? Twenty feet, kind of a little steep back down to the parking lot. But then you go back down towards um where the. The co-op's going. The path, the road matches the parking lot elevation, and then towards the river, it gets a little steep, so. There's, there's just elevations to deal with, and there's terrain to deal with. And to think about. I just keep thinking like this area is going to be really hard to have one sort of zoning criteria.
Well, and that might, you might be a hundred percent right, we we have to. You know, nothing set in stone at this point, you know, this is, we're we're trying to get our ducks in a row and and. And understand what the options are.
So, so does the word flexibility ring true? That, you know, we 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 do want control and input on this, we don't want single family housing, we want. Control in some sense to be able to think about long term development of the area. Instead of a developer thinking about the one parcel or homeowner thinking about the one parcel. But we also want, we need flexibility here too, I think, because like. It's it's just, I'm not getting a one size fits all at all. Bob, Bob's laughing, he always laughs in my honor, of course.
I'm just like, we we think that Google Maps, you know, um the satellite view and. And saying, you know, i- it's not a very big area at all. And then when you look at each of the parcels, you can see there are so many slivers of land. So I, you know, when I, just looking on the north side of the road. So when you look at that, you can kind of see, you know, there's just a, I don't know, a limited number of options there, I don't know if it's a a dozen. But.
Yeah, but over the next fifty years, we could make that, you know, those dozen could all change hands, and it could look really different.
Well, that that's, I understand that and I appreciate that. Um but it's still, you know, because those parcels of land are so small. They've already been cut up, you know, so much that it it's just difficult.
It is. I want to bring in the concept of learning and growing over time to this, because like. Is there a very basic overlay district that we could consider? And work towards in the immediate future? And then that buys us time so that we can think about this more long term and then. Change it over time, because I I want to, I. I get the urgency, Bill Numzer, that we don't want a by right build to occur and make things even. Have more of an identity crisis. So is there something? Is there, it, what I'm saying is, may maybe if we don't try to get the complete picture now, we take. It small steps or intermediate step first. And then learn more and work more towards it. Is that Bill Numzer, what, in your, your experience planning, does that? Ring ring a bell at all? Does that make sense at all?
Well. I think the the what what would unsettle me about that. The most is that we could have one or two projects just come in that just. You know. Derail the whole thing. And and.
But if we set up a district that says you need safe plan approval and special permit through the planning board.
Well, yeah, if we do that, well, if we do, if we get to that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't understand, honestly, I mean, probably because I'm knee deep in it all the time. But I believe we could design an overlay district that is no threat to anybody. And it's just nothing like that, it but it does offer some. Advantages for certain types of development, I don't. Think that that's. That tall order, honestly.
Well. Maybe, maybe, Bill, you designed it for us, maybe we're just not grasping it, and maybe. If we had your picture. That would be, that would give us an anchor on what the, to talk around more.
Um, you know, that's, that's certainly on this summer, this was going to be our big project to tinker with it, and I think we'll be in. Good position to to do that, and we'll also have some more direction on um. Some of the larger parcels and the intentions. That the owners may have on it, you know, um. Now we have the the co-op coming in, I'm really curious to see, you know, how that. Activates the area, or maybe it doesn't do anything, I don't know, but I think it will. And particularly uh with the. I mean, well, I don't know when they're gonna, the powder mill apartments are going to be done, but. Certainly, it's gonna be a lot of changes. And if you, I mean, if we did, if we did nothing, if we just sat, you know, on our hands, nobody suggesting that, I get that. But um it'd be. Be pretty fragmented development.
Uh maybe, maybe we just kick at the town staff bill to. Come up with a draft, maybe if you have a draft, we'll be able to talk better around this. And I I don't want to create busy work, but like, what do you think of that?
Well, that's basically intent of the grant request that we have out there now that we put, and I'm sure. They have to be awarded in the next thirty days, so we'll find out about that, you know, if we get it. I think it's six, thirty days or thereabouts. And um.
Then we have. That may, that may help us answer some of these questions we have, and it may bring to light some other questions, and it may. You know, solve some of the challenges we see, if we just get in and and draft it up and do the work. So tonight, I I feel like we, this has been a great discussion, I don't want to, I'm getting noticing the time. But it sounds like we agree that. Generally, we like the concept, definitely of the north side, we have some questions about the south side of Powder Mill. We have some questions on how to tie in river access. We like the concept of mixed use, um because it ties to housing production plan. We want to consider how to incorporate open spaces the best we can, though we don't really know how to do that. And I like the the concept of having senior amenities or considering um. The senior population over time, you know, this.
We have to do something.
So. And I get the urgency here too, so I do want to move on it. But what, so what I just said, is. Is is there any, you guys see any issues with that guidance I just gave? Is there anything you'd like to add or subtract to the to Bill? I'm just trying to give him some broad brush strokes so that he can. You know, use our input and create a draft for us to talk more about. Can I take your silence that you all love this idea? Yeah, okay.
I love the idea of Bill just figuring it all out, that would be great.
There you go.
I have faith in you, it'll be great.
Okay. Well.
So we wait for that, we we wait to see if we receive the grant, if we do, then we have support, if not, we got to circle back and come up with.
Yeah.
A different game plan, but either way, Bill, I mean. I I think that's enough direction, broad brush direction to.
Yeah.
Dr- draft up, you know, some language and some maps. And then we can just see where we end up and talk more about it.
It gives me some good direction, and it's exciting, I mean, it is exciting.
Yeah, so let's, let's just um, let's keep this topic on your plenty planner update. Over time until we have. Um something to bring back to the board. Any further comments before we 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 end this discussion? Jim Coleman's ready to go to bed. All right, great discussion, guys, um best board ever. Um, let's go to, let's go to item one, meeting minutes.
The longest minutes in the world.
I reviewed them ahead of time.
I heard that, oh, you must have smoked a vowel.
Did she get overtime for these? She must have.
This is like Ben-Hur.
I mean, do we really need that much detail in the minutes? I do understand it's a hearing.
I. Probably not, and I'm looking at that. This was, well, this really was a um. Yeah. Scratch that. I I think we could probably truncate this.
I see a lot of paragraphs starting with my name, I think I just talked to a lot of guys, so. I'll try to figure that out.
Well, Val is, Val has is going to be retiring, and we have a new. Um, a new minute taker, so it would be the good time to do it.
Um, I didn't have any comments on the minutes, the name just spelled correctly. Correct me.
So on page six. There is an issue in that it doesn't align with the condition. And I'm looking at that item, you know, the um item number two, where you see number two. Um, we have the sixty days and a hundred and twenty day check in, but we need to also add in the one year check in. And the one year check in is on the condition. Um, that. That we've established, but it's not reflected in the minutes.
Then I, I don't recall having a one year condition.
Yeah, that I I I on that one, I did double check that, I I I. You talk about where we were with the check back in for the um, I'm having trouble hearing you, Bob, for some reason.
Yeah, so I'll, Bob, I'll try, since since Bill's having a hard time, and he said that there's a sixty and one twenty day review. That is noted in the meeting minutes, but that compared to the conditions. Of the special permit itself, that it also lists a one year.
Yes.
Are you having a hard time hearing me too?
No, I can hear you, fine.
I don't recall making a motion, and I don't recall us discussing one year review.
I made motion.
Did you?
And it included the one year.
Okay, all right.
I have it in my notes.
Okay, okay, but and it's on the special permit.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so we just need to update that motion, right?
Bill, do you, did you get that?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm just checking, yeah, I did.
Okay, so on page six. You know, a third of the way down, there's the conditions, condition two should add. One year to the, as another review.
Add one year to it.
Particularly if it's on the conditions, it should definitely be in the meeting minutes. That was a long meeting, Bob, I'm sorry, I don't recall. Any other comments on the meeting minutes? All right, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from. February twenty second, two thousand twenty two.
As amended.
As amended.
I'll second that.
Thanks, Jim, all in favor, either by voice or raising hand? Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's five zero, Natalie, are you a yes or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's five zero. To approve the meeting, still. And I think we can skip planner update unless there's something quick, Bill, you would like to advise us on. Maybe schedule what's coming up next.
Um, well, in our, well, what's coming up next is Bill's heading on vacation now. I am leaving and I'm going to be out of town. Well, you know, March is my time, I go to California, going, so um you will have um Julia. Uh to prep you for the next. Uh meeting, I'll be, I will be there, but I'll be coming back that day. Um. And um.
Do you think we'll be able to get out the um agenda and all the other? Some items, that's all.
No problem, there's nothing, there's nothing um major that's come in. That's kind of, it's kind of working, we kind of tried to schedule around a little bit, because we knew some, some things are coming in. So the next meeting, we're going to talk about the downtown overlay district, the changes, we're going to talk about um. Really, that's it, as of right now, the stuff may come on, you know.
There is no applicants next?
Don't, I don't think we do, on the next one. And you know, that, we, I will, I'm sure we're going to be getting some more stuff. Coming in, but so you may, and and you may want to consider just giving it a break if you want. But Julia will be the contact um for, you know, I'll be here tomorrow. And then um.
Does, does anyone want to cancel the meeting?
Yes, I I.
Yes, I, I think we probably should.
Next meeting, cancel it?
Yes.
If we don't have any applicants.
Yeah, um, I don't think we have anything.
Okay.
And if.
Hold on, Bill. Any other thoughts about, um, canceling next meeting if there's no applicants?
I could, I could stand to miss the meeting, yeah.
Okay.
I would rather take the opportunity to do a project. I mean, there's plenty of stuff on our list.
Yeah, we had the discussion for the downtown overlay district to review that. That was on our agenda for discussion next time. So we could make it a optional meeting. I'm happy to open it up and just, if we have a core and we could talk about the, the downtown district and our experiences of that. And not make any decisions, but just a discussion. Would that be okay?
Sure.
Okay. Jim, don't, you don't have to come. Or we can, we can just, um, drink beer as well, we're doing it or something. Doesn't matter. I, it's a joke. I know it's public meeting.
I got it.
Okay. All right, so we'll keep it option, if there's no applicants, it's completely optional, no pressure. Don't feel like you have to attend at all. And in the, in, in the future, next month or so, maybe in April, I'd like to talk about fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three goals, so the goals for the next fiscal year.
Good idea, yeah.
So we can get those drafted, and then I like to circulate those to other, other entities in town to get their feedback as a coordination effort, so that by the time June, July comes around, we'll have it solidified. Anything else? Bill, you good? Bill Nemser?
Good.
Jim, you want to make, make, do us the honor?
I would be happy to. Uh, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, I move to close the meeting.
Thanks, Jim. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Natalie. All in favor by, I'll do roll call. Um, Jim?
Yes.
Bill Crenshaw?
Yes.
Natalie?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
No, but yes, it's five zero to close the meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much. Um, also, oh, also Julia will probably circulate the, uh, draft decision for tonight. I'm gonna try, I'll try to help her with him tomorrow and so.
This, I, I assume you mean both decisions? For both applicants?
Yeah, well, the, 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 really, the wells, I gotta get the well, they're, they're, they almost fell over when I told them we had to go for a permit. Poor Justin, I was looking through the bio, I was like, uh-oh.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, that requires signatures? Okay, so if we could all just be diligent to try to get them signatures so that they can move on.
Get that knocked out tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Okay. See you all. Good night.
Thanks, everybody.
Great trip.
Oh, thank you.
I'll be laying out.
When you're dreaming.
Bye, yeah, California dreaming, it is. Bye.